Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:37. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you for your love and your kindness, and we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. And Father God, we just thank you for the provisions that you extend to us and how you keep us and our families safe. And Father God, we just ask that you would bless us with your peace and your wisdom, for oneness and clarity, in this meeting tonight. And Father, we just thank you for your grace and your mercy. And Father God, we just ask that you continue to bless the citizens of Glen Arden, all who's affiliated with us. Our employees, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston? Councilwoman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Here none by unanimous consent. The agenda is hereby adopted. We'll move straight into voting on proposed legislation. First up is...I'm sorry. I must have the wrong one.
No, you don't. I left it off. That was my mistake.
Okay. All right. Yeah, legislation. So first up is legislation. Ordinance 10-2025, an emergency ordinance to amend ordinance 04-2025, an ordinance to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life. Madam Clerk, you don't have to read the whole thing. It's the title. And I think there's only one amendment, right, Councilman Herring?
Yes, just one strike out.
And that...
Was it this one?
Yes.
Yep. And there you go to now, therefore.
Okay. An ordinance to amend ordinance 04-2025, an ordinance to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life. And the amendment will see driveway requirement for vans and pickup trucks. All work vans and pickup trucks, regardless of their use or purpose, must be parked in the owner's driveway and are not permitted to park on city streets. Now, therefore, being adapted and ordained by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 19th day of May, 2025, that this ordinance is and shall become effective 20 days following approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor for a vote?
Some move.
Is there a second? I will second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah. Can we take emergency off of this because this is not an emergency ordinance? This is the second reading.
Okay.
So you need to change that to the second reading.
All right, okay.
Yeah, second reading and take off emergency.
Is she...
Oh, it's off of here. Does my read emergency? Is that on...oh, that's on the agenda.
On the title.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. So, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so this is just an ordinance.
So we'll just make sure that the title just says an ordinance, not an emergency.
And you put second reading on it, which is today's date. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion before we move forward with the vote?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify that pickup trucks, like the ones on Beth Avenue that are obstructing people's views when they're trying to drive through, those will now be able to be parked on the street. Is that what this is? Or are we just talking about the person?
You're...
Because it would strike the whole thing. Then those cars, those pickup trucks will remain on the street.
Councilman Herring, were you able to hear that?
Yeah. No, it's just the personal-use pickup trucks and personal-use vans. That's what we're talking about. So if you still got ladders and stuff on your truck, that's still considered a work vehicle.
So do you want to just add language to specify that only...
Well, I took it out because it said "personal use" in it. So I took the "personal use" out. Because it said that was restricting people who had personal-use vehicles. There's a lot of people who have pickup trucks and vans that they just use for personal every day. They don't use it for work. And the language in here also says you can't have any vehicle with ladders and all that other apparatuses on it anyway. That's still in here. That's not changing.
Okay.
So, Council President, as I've heard or read, I think it needs to be clarified because those types of ones that Councilman Herring is referring to with, you know, that are being used for work purposes, those would still need to be parked in the driveway. But as I've heard and understood it as it was read, it's that entire clause that's being removed, not just the portion of the personal vehicles.
Can you...
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, Councilman.
The only part that's being removed is that striking out the line that says, "including personal use." Everything else stays the same.
Did you get that, Councilwoman Fareed?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, well, go ahead and move forward with the voice vote.
Councilwoman Fareed?
No.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
No.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes, I'd like to change my vote to no so I can bring this back.
You can bring it back with the yes, but it's fine.
Well, actually, you can't because the no's would have won.
Okay, that's fine. No, I don't want to. It's fine. Okay. So, no, it failed.
Okay.
All right.
All right. R-59-2025, a resolution to revise the rules, regulations, and fee schedule for the Gold Room. Uh, no, you don't have to read the whole thing. I'm sorry. Could you give me one of those, please? I don't have it. Oh, which one? Thank you. So this 10... Yeah. Well, this one, you can read the whole thing because you don't have to read all of the addenda.
Okay. A resolution...oops, a resolution to revise the rules, regulations, and fee schedules for the Gold Room. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 92, Gold Room, Section 92-1, adoption of rules and regulations of the City of Glen Arden Code, the City Council may adopt rules and regulations from time to time to govern the use and operation of the Gold Room, including the fees to be charged for the said use. And whereas in 2012, the City Council adopted a fee schedule that reflected the fees to be charged for various types of events in the Gold Room, and whereas the types of events have changes due to legislation from Presdeudance County, and whereas the rules and regulations are no longer pertinent to the types of events that occur in the Gold Room. And whereas the staff has determined that in order to make the Gold Room a self-sufficient enterprise, the rules, regulations, and fees need to be updated to reflect current market conditions. And whereas the council has agreed that it is in the public interest to revise the fee schedule for the Gold Room to more fairly reimburse the city for the costs and expenses associated with the maintenance of the Gold Room. And whereas the council has reviewed the proposed rules and regulations for the operation of the Gold Room, and whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to amend the rules and regulations to ensure a more efficient and effective operation of the Gold Room. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council... of the City of Glen Arden Council, sitting in regular session this 19th day of May, 2025, do hereby declare the following. Number one, the amended fee schedules for the Gold Room attached hereto and incorporated herein by adopted. And two, the amended rules and regulations for the Gold Room attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference be and are hereby adopted. Three, that a master usage form and liability waiver are hereby incorporated. Four, that a new broadest application is hereby incorporated. Number five, that a new rental agreement is hereby incorporated. And number six, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage by the council.
Excuse me, your mic is going to sit up.
Mine. Can you hear me?
Move the mic around. That's better.
Yeah, she turned it off, Mr. Gray.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. All right, is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah. For item number two on page two, starting at line 51, it says, "The amended rules and regulations for the Gold Room attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference be and hereby adopted." Can we add the wording somewhere in there, "as was discussed in the work session"? What day was that?
May the 6th.
May 6th. "As was discussed in the work session on May the 6th."
Okay. So the amended rules and regulations for the Gold Room, as discussed in the work session on May 6th, sorry, be and hereby adopted?
Yeah.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion or amendments? Do you want a voice vote? Any opposition to pass this resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go to a voice vote. There we go. I think that's better.
Thank you, okay. Councilwoman Fareed, thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
I still have not seen the legal waiver to...for folks to bring food in. From a legal standpoint, I think a waiver should be written. I don't think it should be the responsibility of the city manager or the Gold Room coordinator to write this waiver. I think it should be...have legal sufficiency. So my vote is no.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
All right. This resolution passes? Next is Resolution 60? Yep, 60?
A resolution accepting a grant from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, GOCCP, in the amount of $40,000, authorizing the Chief of Police to utilize said funds to enhance public safety through acquisition of live video and license plate recognition services. Whereas the City of Glen Arden has been awarded a grant in the amount of $40,000 from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention to enhance public safety through the acquisition of live video and license plate recognition services. And whereas the Glen Arden Police Department chooses Flock Inc., Flock Group Inc. as its vendor of choice for live video and LPR services, providing coverage at seven sites within the city limits. Whereas the mayor and city council recognize the value and effectiveness of the utilization of a live video and LPR system and the necessity of funding for its operation and expansion to enhance law enforcement capabilities. And whereas Flock Group Incorporated has been awarded a competitively bid contract by the City of Suffolk, Virginia, under contract number 24058, which satisfies the City of Glen Arden's procurement requirements under Section 818B of the City Charter. And whereas the City Council has determined that utilizing this contract through cooperative purchasing is in the best interest of the city. And whereas the city intends to procure the services of Flock Group Incorporated in accordance with the pricing and terms outlined in the City of Suffolk's contract, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, as follows. Number one, the City of Glen Arden hereby formally accepts the grant award in the amount of $40,000 from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Number two, the Chief of Police is authorized to utilize $25,000 of the grant for the purchase of live video, LPR, and traffic analytics technology services provided by Flock Group Inc. And number three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
Some move.
Is there a second? I will second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I have a major problem with this piece of legislation. Again, I think it's an invasion of people's privacy. I think reading everybody's license plate that comes in and out of the city is an overkill, first of all. And then we're putting these up, and I haven't seen any crime stats to say we even need them. Have we got any crime stats on this? I mean, we're just saying we need them because of what? And I'm looking, and another issue is also, as a council member, a citizen had the placement of the cameras before...I had to get the placement...get the map from her because I didn't get it. And I'm not sure why I didn't get it, but, um, yeah, that's a problem for me. Because I think more discussion should be had because people really need to know what these cameras actually do. And they record and they store your license plate every time you enter and leave the city. And they also stay in a major database with Flock camera, and they can be tracked anywhere across this country. So I don't think it's anybody's business where anybody drives their car in and out the city. And I would like to see what the crime stats say to show that we actually need these cameras. A major problem I have, again, is also MLK Park where it's going to be recording 24 hours a day, pointing it at people's houses. It's going to be recording people going in and out their houses. The American Legion, same thing. I mean, Veterans Memorial, the same thing. It's going to be pointed into the park, which is going to also be pointed on people's houses, recording people's houses 24 hours a day and recording people going in and out their houses. I think it's an invasion of privacy, and I think it's overkill. What you need is just policing. That's what I say. Because I would like to see the stats to say we have that much crime in this community that we need these cameras in the city. I don't see the need for it. There is no need for it, to tell you the truth. And why is there one on Bright Sea Road near Landover Mall outside of the city? I'm just...I'm just looking...you know, this is my first time seeing a map, so I'm just asking the question. You know, I mean, since this is...I mean, we should have been seeing this, and there should have been more discussion on it. I think people should really know what these cameras do because they're not just cameras that's just going to take your license plate. Your information is actually stored in a database with Flock, and you can be tracked. Anytime you go by any Flock camera in this country, your tag can be pulled up and tracked.
Thank you for your opinion, Councilman Herring.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact. They advertise that.
So I disagree. And so the representatives were here to answer any questions that councilmen had, that council members had. We also attach what Flock safety does around the country and how it's utilized correctly around the United States of America, how it helps in 21st century policing, how it has basically restored over 1,000 missing children with their families due to a license plate reader, how it has an auditing system where you cannot just go and track when people are coming in and out of the city. If I stole a car, a Chevrolet, and it comes into the city, then it hits for a police officer to know that there's a stolen car in the city, and the police office can be dispatched to whatever area that was the license plate reader picked up. I think this is an extremely valuable tool for our police officers. I think that it has helped around the country. I've already said examples of what have happened because I've had interactions with Flock before, even before being a council member in the City of Glen Arden. Also, we are constantly asking our officers to not be reactive and be proactive. And this is them being proactive. And now that they're being proactive, we're saying, no, we don't want you to be proactive. We want you to go back to being reactive. We're short-staffed, so to have police officers at every corner to try to pick up license plates of stolen vehicles is just not a good, efficient use of our resources. And I just, based on what the representatives said when they came here, based on the needs of our police department, I think this would be a valuable tool. We have a grant that's going to pay for this system, and the license is for two years. And as I've discussed offline with Councilman Herring, why not wait...why not accept the grant and use this system for two years? If it does not yield the stats that council members are desiring, then we don't have to renew it after two years. But if our police department, who are understaffed, is asking for us to help them be proactive in 21st century policing, then I think that we owe it to them, especially if it's going to be free using grant funds. That's why I encourage people to vote for this. I understand everybody has their own vote, and they vote up and down, but I encourage all members to support this effort of our police department.
Mr. President, may I follow up with this?
Sure.
Again, Flock was here, and as usual, we get the stuff like a day late, a dollar short before they come, and you can't do your research. So like I said, I did my research, and Flock cameras do track. Flock cameras do store it in a major database. And again, you need to...you really should have some stats saying why we need it because no one has said yet why we need it in the City of Glen Arden. I'm trying to figure out what...I mean, is there a major crime epidemic that we have here? We just got ranked the third safest city in the state. So I'm just trying to figure out why do we need these Flock cameras and why is one of them outside the City of Glen Arden, if you want to have them at all? Also, Flock did not...I can wait. Y'all finished? Okay. Also, Flock did not...what about the opt-out feature?
The opt-out feature?
Yeah, Flock was here. Did it tell us about the opt-out feature?
Did you ask about the opt-out feature?
I just found out about the opt-out feature.
So, no, can I...let me respond. Let me respond, and I'll give you the full back. Because what I think is incredibly unfair is we are constantly behind on legislation because we wait till the last minute to start reading something that people have given us a month ago, or in this case, three weeks ago. And now we're going to tell the police department, oh, I don't know about it, so I'm not going to vote for it. Or what about this? What about that? When there was a representative here that was available to answer questions...I get it that everyone... I'm full of respect that you think that it's a, you know, a Big Brother, you know, tracking device. I respect that. But I will hope that members of this council can step outside their own belief and listen to the opposition to see if it's something different from what we actually believe and to ask questions, to push the representative to answer tough questions. And if your theory holds true, then we all can hear it, and we all can vote the way you would vote. But what we cannot do as a city, because we're constantly talking about things don't get done, is have this sitting in front of us for three weeks and at the last minute say, okay, well, what about this question? I think that's incredibly unfair.
And, Mr. President, what I think is incredibly unfair is to give us a piece of... give us a piece of legislation to be discussed at the work session with the people there two days before the work session and then expect us to be able to research as much as we need to work, research, to find out what it all entails. Now, once I went and started researching Flock and pulling up information on them, I realized, and my thing is, what I think is totally unfair is that Flock did not even tell us that they have an opt-out feature. Now, that's what you should be upset about because there is an opt-out feature. And once they set this up, they have to provide us a link for any citizen to put their tag in and say, I want to opt out. I don't want my tag photographed. So then it will not be in the system. It'll say resident. So my thing is, technically, it's a waste of money because if every citizen does that, you're not going to get the same results that you want to get. Because I'm going to tell you right now, I still want to know how many stolen cars have we gotten in the city? How much crime is in the city that we need to be checking cars for in and out the city? Again, and if Flock was being upfront and forthright with what they were presenting, they would have mentioned the opt-out feature. Now, that's what I'm saying. I don't think it's fair. And I've said this over and over again. We get everything at the last minute. We get contracts on the day of work sessions. Or we get contracts, and then after the work session's over, we have a public hearing where we shouldn't be having another work session on the floor. By that time, the people's gone, you know? So then you got to do your research. So that's why you should have the information way before, some two days before a work session. So that's what I think is unfair, is that you're expecting us to sit here and do all of this extra work and not come with more questions after we do some research on it. So, and that's what I did. I did my research, and I was surprised to see an opt-out feature on this product. So my thing is, why did they not mention this opt-out feature to us when they presented it? They should have presented...I had a concern at the meeting. I had a concern about privacy. I had a concern about, you know, being tracked. They never said one word about they have an opt-out feature on there that I could put my tag in there and opt out of it. That's what I'm saying, you know? So my thing is, it isn't about me being forthright, it's about them being forthright. So y'all need to find out from them. Is there an opt-out feature? They say it on their website that there's an opt-out feature? They had a presentation, they were here for two hours, and they didn't say one thing about it. So where's the question to them? Why didn't they present that?
They were here.
They were here. They should have presented the whole package as it was written, as it functions. And if they had an opt-out feature, they should have mentioned it at that meeting. Then I could have said, okay, well, then I encourage every citizen I know to give them a link to opt out because I don't think...nobody needs to be traced. Nobody needs to be in a database. I'm going to tell you another thing, too. If you think the government, the federal government's not going to get their hands on this, you're highly mistaken. Because again, we just passed legislation...well, y'all just passed legislation to protect illegal immigrants. That should be a major tool for them. They're going to have their license plate wherever they go, wherever they want to track them. You can...they're going to use that. They're using every means necessary to track down illegal immigrants. And we're going to give them a tool right here that's going to be right there in their back door, and they're going to guarantee they're going to get that information because they share the information among...and they say they share the information among police officials, police organizations. And people privately can actually install this, too. So, you know, it isn't like it's just police that can have access to information. Now, that's on their website. So that they have this information, and you don't have to be a police agency to do it. You can do it as a private. We can do it without the police. We don't need the police to put this in. And we can make you the administrator and the city manager the administrator for all information. It is not just a police tool. It's used both for private and public safety concerns. So that's my...you know, that's my thing. I'm just like, everybody don't want to cry wolf when they cry, oh, 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 I feel unsafe, I feel unsafe, until your tag is being...until your tag is in the system and somebody pulls you off the information. That's the same thing that happened with 9/11 when the towers went down. Everybody gave up their rights under Patriot Act. You can't even check out a book in the library now if I'm being tracked, being followed. So I'm just saying, I don't...I just think privacy is important to everybody. And I think nobody has a right to decide where this information goes. And I'm going to tell you right now, I can't even get a fingerprint log, much less if I asked for an audit report on this.
Like I said, I respect...
Let me...one other thing. I would like to...I would prefer if Councilwoman Jones would keep her remarks and her little snide, little genuineness to herself because I just heard it. You know, I'm really...
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. You don't untie me. Point of order. Councilman Herring and Councilwoman Jones.
You haven't untamated yourself.
Councilman Herring. One, I expect every council member to adhere to a point of order. I would be the last option to remove a council member. I want every council member to be heard, but if there's a point of order, let's hear the point of order. And I...yes, please. So let's agree to adhere to the point of orders and just stop immediately so that it can be ordered because I'm pretty...one second. Because we always... Uh, because we owe it to our citizens who are, who have logged on to hear us uh talk about legislation and vote on legislation. We owe it to ourselves and to them to uh govern ourselves accordingly. Uh, one, one second, one second. And so I I I just expect all council members, if there is a point of order, then I will rule on that point of order and then whoever has the floor can continue as long as there's, there are no personal attacks. Agreed? Now that I, now that I've done that, there's a point of, there was a point of order uh by council, you start talking, there's a point of order by Councilman Jones. So I'm here her point of order.
Okay, first of all, I had the floor.
Yes, yes, you had the floor, but, yes.
And I was making my statement.
I understand you had that, but if a point of.
Her point of order, but she started speaking before you recognized her point of order, didn't you?
I, I, yes, she did.
Now, are you gonna chastise her like you just chastised me?
No, that wasn't chastising.
Yeah, that was a chastise, are you gonna chastise her because she started commenting before the point, before you recognized her point of order?
I expect everybody, and that's why I said it wasn't to you, Councilman Harry, I expect everybody to adhere to the point of orders. Councilman Harry and Councilwoman Jones, Vice President Ferguson, Councilwoman Farid, and even myself. So with that being said, Councilwoman Jones, what is your point of order?
Council President, I have not opened my mouth since I've been sitting here listening to this uh barrage of comments from the councilmen. So, please, I have not said anything, haven't opened my mouth, so I don't know where he's getting this. Uh, he's trying to indict me on some uh comment that I made. If I made a comment, I would like for the uh, the uh.
So, h- how about this? Whenever, whenever someone else is talking, then everybody withhold their comments or their under-the-breath uh comments. Whatever it is that we just listen, even if there's an accusation, that we just hold everything in into, we can respond.
I understand, but I didn't even make a under-the-breath comment, I'm just sitting here listening.
Okay, thank you, Council Jones, Councilman, Councilman Harry, you had the floor, you can finish.
And uh, let me just finish, she did, I'm not gonna go back and forth, she's gonna say if she did, then, you know, play it back, but she had her mic off, so you're not gonna be able to play it back. So she did, and she constantly making these under the, under her breath comments, which is a constant for her. Um, but here she go again, here she go again.
To who?
Yeah, yeah, so it's point of order, Councilwoman Jones, I I I did just ask for people to stop. I un- I understand, but I I did just ask for no one, if if another council member is speaking, even if we uh vehemently disagree with it, let's just hold our comments and then I will give whoever the floor after uh the uh council member has spoken so that you can have a rebuttal. But I think it is important so people um can have uh peace in knowing that everyone is listening uh that when you have the, that if a member has the floor, they have the floor.
Please pardon the interruption if I've made any, like I said.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Go back on the the uh recording and see whether, what comments that I made, that I did not make.
Councilman Harry, are you finished?
Yes, and since her mic is off, you won't find any recordings, but I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Chief, who's the representative from Flock, is it uh Brandon Williams? Okay, Councilman Harry, you're, we have Mr. Brandon Williams here, who's, Mr. Williams, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
So, council members, please, this is discussion, if you have any questions, the representative from Flock's safety is here, ask away.
Okay.
Council, Council President, Council President, before, before any questions, do you, is it okay if I say something real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, obviously, we spent the majority of our session a couple of weeks ago talking about invasion of privacy and it's totally fair. Um, but the reality is, is that every single grocery store that you walk into, retail store, bank, gas station, nine out of ten homes, they all have live video cameras. We live in a society where there's hundreds of live video cameras, whether we know they're there or not. And the only intended use case for these cameras is if something happens, a negative incident happens, we have recorded footage to look back on, so we have a fighting chance of actually doing something about it. We talked about the close proximity of all the municipalities in Prince George County, when something happens, they're gone within seconds. You're not wrong, but the reality is these cameras communicate with one another and a lot of the jurisdictions in and around Glen Arden have flock cameras, District Heights, Capitol Heights, Hyattsville, Edmiston, Forest Heights, Morningside, Brentwood. So when something does happen and they're gone within a couple of minutes, then that neighboring agency that has the flock cameras is going to get an alert so we can actually do something about it. And so there's already likely hundreds of cameras in the, in in the city of Glen Arden today. And again, only intended to 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 be used when something happens. And so why should it be any different for protecting the city of Glen Arden as well as the parks? And so we're not capturing any personal information. Again, it's only a picture of the vehicle and the plate, we cannot tie that to an individual. We didn't get a chance to speak about this, but the Maryland, the the state of Maryland has put in guardrails around the use of LPR technology. And so every year, we have to send a report to the Maryland State Police with an audit of all of the reasons that the police department logged into the system. And one of the prohibited use cases, one of the many prohibited use cases of license plate readers is immigration. Okay, so it cannot be used for immigration, everything is being logged and audited within the system. And so it can't be used for that. And so at the end of the day, again, this is to help the police department do a lot more with less. They're already understaffed, so having more officers out and about on the street isn't even an option. And the reality is that these, these days, more police presence actually doesn't come with a positive perception. And so this type of technology, again, helps them do more with less, they can collaborate with other jurisdictions. All businesses in the area already have live video cameras. So again, why should it be any different for the parks, especially if we're not capturing any personal information whatsoever? And also, the data gets deleted after a year. And so, but Maryland state law is that we have to retain the data for a year and that they can't share the data with any agency outside of the state of Maryland. So they can only share within the state of Maryland. They have to report once a year of all of the logins and the reasons. And you will have an LPR policy in place where one of the prohibited use cases is for illegal immigration. And so all of the neighboring agencies have flock, they can communicate with one another, the PDs can work together. And again, there's already live video cameras all over the city likely and all the local businesses and at most of the homes. And the only intended use case is for if something happens, we have a chance of recorded footage to do something about it. No one has the time or the bandwidth to sit there and watch anyone shop or go to the bank, but if you rob that retail store, that's another situation and they've got recorded footage so they can do something about it. And so again, the total, the big brother thing is totally understandable, but again, that's not the intended use case for this. We have LPR policies in place that we make the agencies have in place. The state of Maryland has LPR laws and regulation in place. There's reporting requirements so they can make sure that nobody is using it for unintended purposes. And there's even fines and jail time that are at at stake here if anybody's caught misusing the technology. So the guardrails are in place to ensure that nobody's misusing it. The privacy standards are put in place to make sure that we're not capturing anybody's personal information. And then the data gets deleted after the intended retention period that the state of Maryland by law makes us have in place. So that's all that I wanted to say, President Curtis.
Man.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Williams, Councilman Harry.
Yes, uh, and that's all, all you said was nice, but I choose to go into a store, I know there's cameras in there. I choose to go anywhere else I go that has cameras, I choose to go in there. I don't choose to be tracked on a public street in the, in, out in public, uh, going in and out of a house or driving in and out of my city. Um, again, you keep on saying, you know, it's not a privacy thing, it is a privacy thing. If you're holding, withholding that information and then you're saying this information is shared all throughout the agencies in Maryland, that's a wide swath of people being, uh, information being shared. Also, who fills out the audit? The, the agency fills out the audit. They're gonna say what they wanna say. A what?
It's automatically recorded, no one has to manually fill it out.
Okay, so it's automatically recorded that is, that that somebody went in and out, so. Um, again, again, like I said, again, I choose to go into those places, I'm not choosing to have my license plate checked every time I go in and out of, in and out of the city. And somebody can't, nobody's gonna sit there and look at it, no, you ain't gotta sit there and look at it, you just know my license plate number, let me pull it up and see what we don't, see how many times that that went somewhere. That license plate went in and out or where it went to or what what cameras it hit. They ain't gotta pull up my information, they may just be looking at the tag number. So I'm just saying again, it can be, and and you you keep on saying the intent. A lot of things were done without the intent and intent ended up changing and you don't know what this, what this government's gonna do when it comes down to immigration and these cameras and the information that you hold in in uh in your possession. So we don't know what's, and I don't, I don't even want to get a government that little bit of access. And therefore, they keep on saying we're short of police officers, whose whose responsibility is that? We, the positions are in the budget, fill them. You know, and I'm gonna tell you this again, policing does work, people want to see the police, people want to feel comfortable seeing the police out there on the streets. You know, people don't want, if you're gonna get, if we're gonna get cameras to do everything, then maybe we need to cut the police budget. Maybe that's what we need to do, since we're gonna have cameras doing everything. Okay, so we, I mean, I'm I'm just saying, you know, if we're gonna get them to do everything, then see how much protection you get from. Biggest Glen Arden is, I could be in and out of Glen Arden in two minutes. If I robbed something down at Sea Pleasant, I'm not stopping in Glen Arden. I'm gonna go straight down to fifty, two ninety-five or 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 ninety-five. And I could be in Virginia, Annapolis County, or Washington DC in no time flat. So I don't even see the need for it, that's my thing. Again, and do you have an opt-out feature?
You talk, are you referring to individual citizens?
Is there, does your, does your um system offer an opt-out feature? Website.
If if our system does, I'm not aware of it, you you bringing that up for the first time is is news to me. But if you, if you read that on the website, which I believe that you said that you did, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if if an individual wants to go in and opt out, then they have the ability to do so, if that's what the flock website says.
So you don't know what your website says, you don't know the features of your, of your, of your software?
Well, again, hundreds of millions of, hundreds of millions of images are being, are being just captured throughout the day. And so a lot of times, citizens don't even notice the camera, so we don't ever have situations where this, this opt-out ever comes up. So I'm happy to double, I'm happy to check on it and get some more clarity for you. Um, same thing with the camera locations, like I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, nothing is set in stone. Like no contract has been signed, no camera location is solidified. So again, we're, we are happy to collaborate with the council, with the police department on on where where the best coverage looks like, obviously, that would make no sense for a camera to be pointing in someone's home. You know, it's, it's, and so again, we are happy to co- to collaborate with you all. Um, and 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 even if, even if further demonstrations need to be had so people can see exactly what it is that this, you know, this technology, how it works, what it is and what it isn't, then I'm I'm totally, I'm totally happy to to walk anybody through any kind of a demonstration or whatever is necessary. So if 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 this topic about the opt-out needs further clarification, then I'm more than happy to provide it. Because at the end of the day, whether the vote is yes or no, I at least want to make sure that there's no stones left unturned and that there's not any lingering misconceptions about, again, what this is and what this isn't. Because we we've, we completely lost focus on the benefit for the police department, which that's what this is intended to do. And so I I didn't really get a lot of opportunity in the last session since we predominantly spoke about privacy. You know, there wasn't any questions that were asked about it. So again, I'm happy to uncover anything to make sure there's no stones left unturned so that everybody feels comfortable and confident with the decision that they make regardless of what that decision is.
Well, I I mean, my thing is this, again, this is not a police state, this is, this state, this city is run by the ci- the citizens of this community and they have a say, it doesn't matter really, you know, how the police department feel about it. It's, it, what matters is what this council and what the citizens want. Um, my thing is you just gotta make it work with what you have. Um, so again, I asked about an opt-out feature, you don't seem to know about it, it's on your website, but now you're gonna have to look into it, so.
I'm ha- happy to do so. But it sounds like based on your concern of privacy, that that opt-out feature is actually a good thing, no?
Yeah, it's a good thing, but I still don't, I still don't, I still don't, I I'm a, I'm, I'm a big proponent of privacy, that's just it. I don't believe nobody needs to be tracking anybody, I don't believe, because those cameras will be sitting in a park, which will be facing people houses. This is gonna be recorded twenty-four seven, it's gonna be sitting over there in Ward Two at the Veterans Memorial, facing houses, people, you, and you're gonna see people going in and out of people houses. You may not be intending to look at that, but that's what it's gonna pick up, because you're not just gonna have it focused on the memorial.
Well, sir, we know we actually are, and I think one of your, one of your concerns was that when I mentioned that we only have a fifteen-hundred-foot range of the cameras, you felt like that wasn't nearly lo- big enough, you felt like that wasn't gonna capture the entire park. And so, so again, we, our cameras are only intended to zoom in on specific areas using the use case of the park. And so we don't have a large enough zoom to capture the whole entire park and get people's residents in their homes.
Didn't you say that it would be recorded twenty-four seven?
Well, yeah, we're not talking about the recording, we're talking about the coverage of what the camera can actually, like, how how much coverage can the camera get? We only have a fifteen-hundred-foot range for the camera. So therefore, like in the Veterans Memorial Park scenario, we are gonna, and we are gonna strategically place the, the camera to where it's focused in on the memorial and it's only able to get the memorial. It's, it's not wide enough or long enough to get the whole entire park or even start going into other people's homes. And so it's, it's, again, we're going to very strategically place these cameras in a way where y'all subjectively feel like they're non-invasive. Again, nothing is set in stone from a camera location, a camera angle standpoint. And so we strategically place these to where they're only capturing the vehicle as it comes by on the main road and then very specific parts of the park that are important to you all to know what's going on, especially late hours of the night when usually there's less patrol or any patrol. And that's, that's when typ- typically negative incidences happen in the park, just using that as an example. And so even if we wanted to, we can't capture the whole entire park, we definitely can't get the whole park then start getting people's homes. And so again, we're only capturing what's important. And and for the memorial park example, that is the memorial that the city has invested money in. The landscape that the city has invested money in. I'm assuming y'all don't want people going, and I'm not saying that maybe you haven't experienced vandalism, but hopefully you never do. But in in the case that vandalism case does happen at the memorial, we capture that on recording and the police department has a fighting chance of doing something about it. And when you talk about more police presence, every agency wants more officers, but the applicant pool has drastically shrunk and it's almost evaporated. And so having more, hiring more officers unfortunately these days, it's really not an option. And 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 so you, it's talk to any chief you want, they'd rather hire more bodies than implement technology. And so, but the reality is, is that that's just not an option today. And police departments are getting scrutinized for literally everything that they do, they're darned if they do and they're darned if they don't. And so again, this technology is intended to help them when incident, and work together with the other agencies in Prince George County, including Prince George County Police. I mean, Edmiston solved a homicide for Prince George County Police about three weeks ago and the homicide didn't even happen in Edmiston. But because they're able to share data with each other in a very, very guard-railed scenario, they're able to communicate and collaborate and actually have a fighting chance of putting cases like that to bed where before technology, so many cases would just go unsolved and then the public perception, and not saying it's the case in Glen Arden, but the public perception of safety dwindles.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do you have any other questions, Councilman Harry?
Um, no, that's it, I, 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 like I said again, I'm, I asked about the opt-out feature, obviously, he doesn't know about it, um, it's on their website, so.
Happy to provide more clarity.
Okay, are there any, any other comments from council members? Um, I will add just to the point and I'm happy to work with council members, um, happy to do more research. Uh, but I think another issue that police officers are facing, and we talking about, you know, we're understaffed, just hire some more, is that it's gonna be tough to hire people if they're coming to us for help to keep this city safe. And every time they come to us, they're met with no, or, or, or as if we have more insight on how to do their job than they do. Um, I'm not saying that I would agree with every proposal that they would submit. Um, but I do agree with yielding to the fact that they know more than me about policing. And that, um, this grant is intended to help them uh move forward with keeping the city safe, uh, utilizing this mechanism, knowing that they're short-staffed. So, I, I, and and this is, this is just not, this is not to disrespect your opinion, Councilman Harry. And this, and this is. And this, and this is not an attack on you.
I know it's not an attack on me or anything else, but I'm going to just say this. As a citizen in this community, they got the biggest budget in this community, two million dollars. Two million dollars. So, yes, I'm expecting some return on our investment. Yes, I'm expecting some, something to be done. Yes, I'm expecting to see police throughout the neighborhood. Yes, I am, and do not ever say we don't get a police officer what they want. They get cars every year. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on cars. Uniforms, we got uniforms in this closet right now that they can't even use. Equipment. So, don't ever say we don't get, I, I supported the police ever since I've been on this council, from salary increases to cars, to everything that they wanted. And they've gotten almost everything that they possibly, that they wanted. Some things I didn't even think they needed. I don't think they needed assault rifles. But I'm like, okay, they say they need them, they, they need them, and I guarantee it, got dust on them right now. So, don't ever say we don't support the police. We do support the police. We've taken salaries, we've taken salaries up year after year. Y'all have given them a, a, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar retirement account that we can't afford. We're going to buy more cars. It's going to be in the next budget. So, I, I, to, to say we don't, we don't support the police officer is, is really a, a misstatement all the way around, because we do support the police. Two-million-dollar budget, that's what their budget is. That's where we spend most of our tax dollars on it, on the budget, on our pub, uh, police and, uh, public works is second. So, yeah, we do spend money on the police, and we do get a police what they want. We can't give them a sixty-two-thousand-dollar salary, because we're in that boot. That's not going to happen in Glen Arden. But we give them as much as we possibly can afford, without jeopardizing the services to the citizens in this community.
Okay, so, I, I will say this, and then we can move on with the vote. I didn't say that we don't support the police officers. Did not say that. I will add, though, that if someone was making nineteen thousand, this is an example, if someone was making nineteen thousand dollars a year below the poverty line, and I raised them, gave them a raise to be just at the poverty line, I don't think I get any type of flowers for, for paying them what they deserve. Right? So, I'll, in my opinion, the salaries in the city were low. Now, can we pay them what they really deserve? No, because we have a budget, I agree. But for years, the salaries in, uh, the city of Glen Arden have been low. And we did a great job of coming together and implementing a salary classification, reclassification, and giving some raises out. But that was hard-earned, I believe, and well-deserved. So, I don't want to mix up, um, giving something what, what they deserve, uh, as a, as a, basically a handout, because I, I don't view it as a handout. I view it as well-earned and well-deserved, and, and at, even still now, below the market for what they're worth. All I'm asking, uh, and like I said, all I'm asking is that, in this way, that we support our officers in helping advance, uh, policing technology to help them do their jobs. And I'll just say that, and we can go with the vote.
Let me just follow up one.
President Curtis?
Who's that?
It's Brandon again with Flock.
But.
Some more clarity on the opt-out feature. So, it's for homeowners associations. So, we also work, again, with neighborhoods and HOAs, and so, that's the reason why I wasn't aware of it at first, because I only work with law enforcement agencies. And so, residents can opt out and put themselves on what we call this safe list. And so, it helps distinguish between residents and non-residents of the neighborhood. And so, it also helped the police distinguish between the non-residents and the residents. So, that's what that opt-out feature is specifically for homeowners associations that are also utilizing flock cameras for their residents.
Okay. So, Councilman, last, last.
Yeah, last coming. But I didn't want to say this. Let me say this about salaries, because, again, since you brought it up. When I got on board, police were making twenty-six thousand dollars a year. That was absolutely, way below the poverty level. I said, you can't even live on it. And I pushed every year to try to take those salaries up, over and over again, and I continued to try to push them. But at some point, we got to, and when we did the salary study, he gave us what we can afford with the budget that we had. So, that's why we are where we are. And I, like, again, until you, when you start rolling back services to the citizens to increase the salaries even more, that's what you're going to have to do. Because he looked at our budget, and he said, this is what y'all can afford in the way of salaries. And that's where everybody is at right now. He's also instituted steps and raises and increases and cost-of-living adjustments, so that we don't go over our budget, because, again, we, we can't afford that. We're a small municipality. We have a small budget. We don't want to raise taxes. We don't raise taxes. We have one of the lowest tax rates ever. So, again, yeah, I was a big proponent of taking the salaries up for the staff in this community, but, again, you can only take them up so high before you got to say enough is enough, and you, and you want to jeopardize the quality of life for the citizens in this community.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, we'll just move on with the vote, so we don't continue to prolong this discussion. We'll clearly do a voice vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Councilwoman Jones, because I have seen, and I was looking for the pictures that I took also, of the vandalism that was done in the Veterans Park, I believe that we need them. So, my vote is yes, Council Clerk.
Okay.
Pass.
Okay. And Council President Curtis?
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The yes have it.
Mr. President? I'm going to ask that this council be included in the placement of those cameras, and it is not a unilateral decision on the police department.
So, Chief, if you can be in discussion with the city manager and the city council about the placement of the cameras, that'd be greatly appreciated, sir. All right. Thank you, council members. Next is R-61, 2025. A resolution to authorize NZI Construction Corporation to install speed bumps. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the City Council of the City of Glen Arden passed Resolution R-22-2022 on May ninth, 2022, establishing a speed bump pilot program to adjust, address traffic calming and pedestrian safety on selected streets in each ward. And whereas the City Council of the City of Glen Arden recognizes an urgent need to address recurring traffic and speeding concerns in Wards One and Three, particularly on Glen Arden Parkway, Sir Michael Place, Geaton Park Place, Hay Street, Johnson Avenue, Piedmont Avenue, and Polk Street. And whereas the city manager, in coordination with the Department of Public Works, has identified specific locations within the program for the placement of speed bumps. And whereas, NZI Construction Corporation has been awarded an indefinite quantities contract by Prince George County, contract number nine-three-two-h, which satisfies the city's procurement requirements as outlined in Section eight-one-eight-B of the city charter through the city's adoption of Resolution four-dash-two-oh-two-four. And whereas, the city intends to utilize NZI Construction Corporation under the terms of the indefinite quantities contract to furnish and install heavy-duty rubber speed bumps and permanent asphalt speed bumps at locations approved under the speed bump pilot program. Whereas the proposed work aligns with the city's fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement plan and is eligible to be funded through account number seven-six-one-four-dash-three-zero dash eight-zero dash one-zero. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, that, number one, the city council hereby authorizes NZI Construction Corporation to furnish and install speed bumps on Glen Arden Parkway, Sir Michael Place, Geaton Park Place, Hay Street, Johnson Avenue, Piedmont Avenue, and Polk Street, in accordance with recommendations provided by CPJA, the city's engineering firm, and by council. Two, the city council hereby authorizes NZI Construction Corporation to furnish and install speed bumps on designated streets as part of the speed bump pilot program as established under Resolution R-22-2022. Number three, the total cost of installation shall not exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, which includes materials, signage, labor, and associated hardware. Number four, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute all contracts, purchase orders, and documents necessary to implement this resolution. Number five, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. The Resolution R-61-2025 is hereby adopted.
Uh, Mr. President, I do have one question for the city manager. And the one, they're doing Hay Street now. Are they putting permanent on there, or did that come later?
That would come later.
Okay.
Oh, so Hay Street is being done right now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and, and are those the temporary ones, or are those the permanent?
No, that's hatching.
They'll put permanent on.
Okay.
That's the asphalt repair work, the?
Oh, that's not the speed bump?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I saw that this morning. Okay, thank you. A resolution authorizing SNR management to perform capital improvements as at the American Legion of Glen Arden Post two-seventy-five. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the City of Glen Arden recognizes the importance of maintaining and enhancing public-use facilities that serve veterans, residents, and community organizations. And whereas, the American Legion Post two-seventy-five plays a vital role in the Glen Arden community, offering space for veteran support services and civic engagement. And whereas, there is a demonstrated need to remodel and modern, modernize two commercial bathrooms at the American Legion facility to ensure accessibility, safety, and usability. And whereas, the City of Glen Arden has received a proposal from SNR management to perform the capital improvements at the American Legion Post two-seventy-five, including roof replacement, interior repairs, and HVAC system replacement at a cost of six, six thousand, I'm sorry, sixty thousand dollars. Whereas, the city has made provisions in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget under grant account ten dot three-zero dot one-zero dot seven-eight-three-five to establish a grant to fund this project. And whereas, the mayor and city council support the implementation of this product, project through the creation of a grant program to enable the execution of the proposed work. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this nineteenth day of May, 2025, as follows. Number one, that the City of Glen Arden establishes a grant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to fund capital improvements at the American Legion Post two-seventy-five, including bathroom remodeling, roof repairs, and HVAC upgrades. Number two, that the City of Glen Arden approves a contract with SNR management to complete the proposed remodeling project. Number three, that the funds for this project shall be drawn from the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, ten dot, ten dot thirty dot ten dot seven-eight-three-five grants. Number four, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the city
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I do have one question.
Councilman Harry?
Just want to clear. So, um, when the work is done, you're going to inspect the work after it's all been done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, we will get the signed contract that they have here, a copy that attaches to our, uh, legislation?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, thank you.
I'll just add, on line thirty-four, it contradicts line twenty-three, uh, so that it just, uh, mirrors twenty-three. So, line twenty-three, it says sixty thousand four hundred dollars, um, but we're only putting up sixty, so we're just going to move it up to?
We, we, we didn't approve it. We approved the grant for sixty, so.
So, it has to stay at sixty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, line twenty-three needs to be... No, no, it's fine. I think it's fine, the way it is. Yeah.
That's just a wear-ass, so.
Okay. All right, cool. All right, uh, any other discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. This resolution is hereby adopted. All right, the last legis, piece of legislation on this agenda is R-63-2025. A resolution to extend the contract with municipal grant services. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the Council of the City of Glen Arden recognizes the need to consult with a professional grant writer to secure local, state, and federal grants that may be available to the city. And whereas, the city and municipal grant services entered into agreement, an agreement dated July seventh, 2024, the original agreement, whereby the contractor agreed to provide certain grant-related services for the city. And whereas, the parties desired to extend the original agreement for one year, for agreement term, I'm sorry, for one year, under the same terms and conditions, and the city attorney found the original agreement to be legally sufficient. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this nineteenth day of May, 2025, as follows. Number one, the, the term of the original agreement is hereby renewed for a period of one year commencing on said date. Except as, number two, express, except as expressly modified by Addendum A, all terms, conditions, and provisions of the original agreement shall remain in full force and effect and are hereby ratified and confirmed by the parties. Number three, payment for services shall be taken from the general operations fund. And number four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Councilman Harry?
I have a problem with this, with this, uh, agreement. Again, um, there's certain require, requirements of this, of this consulting agreement that we give, that we should be getting reports, that we should, that this person works at the, works at the, on behalf of the City Council of Glen Arden, which it says, on the performance. I have not heard anything, um, from this company in the way of grants. What they're securing, they haven't come to us and asked us what we wanted. Haven't heard anything. So, I'm just trying to figure out, how is, how, how are we getting grants, and how is this being handled? I did have a major concern when we got a grant and, you know, it was, he was told to work on it, the person, the company was told to work on it, and because we only had a week left to apply for it. And that's a problem for me, because these grants don't just mysteriously pop up out of nowhere with only a week's notice to get them done. So, I don't understand why this contractor has not come to the city, they say, come to the city council with asking us what we want and how we want to move on grants when it comes to getting grants. Accepting a grant and turning it back in is a very, very, very bad thing to do, because once you do that, you're not getting, you're not getting anymore. You turn in a grant that somebody else probably could, possibly could have used. And instead of coming to us and having a discussion ahead of time, long-term, long-range planning, and asking us, well, what do you want for this year? We can start looking at that. We're getting, from what I understand, you know, we get an email, okay, the, the grant is due on Friday, this is a Monday, what you want me to do? You know, I have a problem with that. I don't think that we're getting the services that we, that we should be getting with this, um, with this vendor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? And Mr. O'Connor is on the call tonight.
He can answer the question.
What was the question again?
The question is, why are we so late applying for grants? Why is it always last minute? And why has he, why has he not come to this council, asking what do we want as a council?
Sure, Mr. President, I have no problem answering that. But one, ninety-eight percent of the grants that we've submitted are all within thirty, forty days out for most of them. And grants that were submitted were vetted through the council president prior to, and authorized to be submitted. And also, the staff were also consulted on what their priorities are. So, my point of contact from the origination of the last contract was to be the council president, who would then, uh... president who would then discuss or be amongst the, the council, any, any priorities that are there. And I did in fact have meetings with a, for one particular grant that was for $4.2 million, which unfortunately, that one came out with a late notice because it was a white paper grant, and it was a second chance, which the city never was able to get into the first chance in the first place, but I was able to maximize that one. That was a, that was a late opportunity on that one. Fortunately, I was able to submit that grant. But unfortunately, the architectural and engineering and the feasibility study for the police department was not done, which Kate came back and asked for. That was an unforeseen thing in that grant, and so we got put to the side for that, but we can always go back for it. They said that the grant was well-written and the city's well-postured for it, especially with the support from the bond money that we were able to get. As far as, you know, the direction of, of any of the grants, you know, I, again, as previously stated last year and this year, you know, I, I don't just apply for grants on my own. I, I have to have a purpose, direction, and motivation guided by the council president, which is also in conjunction with staff. My reports, I've submitted reports. I also sent one to the council president, keep him updated, and I brief staff repeatedly on where we are with the grants. And in fact, you just proved one, that's, you've had for several months with the $40,000 that I am very thankful that you did approve it, because if not, it would have had to been deobligated and given back. So I'm thankful for that, and, you know, hopefully, at the end of the two years, not that it may change your opinion, Councilmember Herring, but hopefully you'll see some productivity with it that, that will help.
And let me add, so I do communicate with the council. Unfortunately, my email is not working right now, so I can't pull it up, but it's been several times that Mr. O'Connor has wanted to go for a grant, and I send an email out to council, and if I don't hear anything back, then I tell them to move forward. Also, this council has passed legislation to instruct him to go for different grants. For example, is Resolution R-30-2024, the sponsor is Councilwoman Fareed, the co-sponsor is you, Councilman Herring, and with it, under the now therefore be it resolved, under number three, the city shall pursue funding through local, state, and federal sources, including grants and partnerships, to support financial costs associated with sidewalks retrofitting project. And in particular, I think one of the issues, Councilman Herring, that, one of the comments you made last time is with the, I think, the $4.2 million infrastructure project that I gave the green light on, particularly as a result of the council giving him the green light to go after things like this for infrastructure and sidewalks. So the, the council had already expressly given him permission to do so, and, and he, on top of that, still came back for the green light even though we've already established resolution for him to do so. So there's been multiple layers of communication. I will say that I can't pull up the report right now, but once my email starts to work again, I can pull it up. But with that, take it, Councilman Herring, you have another comment?
Yeah, okay, because again, the contract says he works on behalf of the city council, not behalf, not on behalf of the council president. He gives you information that's supposed to be shared with the council.
And it is.
And the council makes the decision. I remember the last email, it was like a Monday, and the grant was due that Friday, and that, that doesn't give us any, I didn't even know, really know what it was about, because we get no information, we get no grant information, we get no grant write-ups, we get no background on what we're doing or what we're getting. It's just a grant for public safety, or it's a grant for a sidewalk or something like that. And that's not the way it should work. It should work that, we should be getting this information ahead of time to see what projects we're actually looking at, what projects we want to look at doing. Because again, I would have told you right now, everybody keeps on talking about putting sidewalks in War III, the people I talked to over there don't want sidewalks. But you're going to go get a grant for sidewalks, and if they don't want sidewalks, you're going to force them to get sidewalks? I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's what that grant is for, and now I'm just hearing this grant is for a building or something like, for the police station or something like that. Again, and you're applying for it, and we don't know what's going on, and that's what I have a problem with. As a council, we are the council, we represent the city, we represent the finances in this community, we agree that we're going to do what we're going to do, we're going to get that grant, and we're going to do what is required by that. And we're sitting here saying, you're accepting it, not knowing whether the council wants to do it or not. And that's, that's what it comes down to, because we got to vote on this. Because if you get it and the council doesn't want it, then it goes, it goes back, and that doesn't look good on us. We should all be informed, that's what this is. It's a council of seven people that should be informed from beginning to end. And because you're the point of contact does not mean that he does not contact the rest of this council, so I'm asking anything that comes before him or become before you, comes before this whole council. If he's going to cease, if he's going to email you, he needs to see the full council, if he gets his contract again, if it's renewed. I, I, I mean, again, that situation was put on the last lobbyist we had, and, and they, they, it was complaint, 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 we didn't get any reports, we didn't get any of this, we didn't get any of that. We're not getting any of that right now. I don't know what he does for $47,000 or however much he's getting a year, because I don't, I'm not, I'm not in the loop. And I'm a council member, and I should be in the loop, just as much as you are, just every council member up here should be in the loop on what's going on. We should be sitting down having a long-range discussion on what we want and what our priorities are, so we can get the grants that we actually want to use and need, not just something that all of a sudden is on the whim. And again, did we get the grant applications that were submitted, Mr. City Manager? Because I requested that last, at the work session.
Not as of yet.
Okay. That's another problem, because every grant company, I mean, the grant writers we had before, they always submitted the, they always gave us the applications. They gave us the paperwork, they gave us the write-up, so we can see exactly what we had. It was filed with the city manager, and it was filed with the treasurer, so we can have a paper trail. I'm not sure why, it's our information, it's for our city.
Mr. President, if I could address that?
Mr. O'Connor, yes?
Yeah, so I, I think a, a point of clarity that should be given from Mr. Simpson's statement is, is I have provided every single copy, and including, I do believe there was a previous resolution that might have been presented related to all of these grants, that every single attachment was the grant application and everything for signature. And anytime a grant is submitted, the person that gets it is yourself, obviously, you sign every document that comes to you. And then again, Mr. Simpson gets copies of the application as well as the chief of police. And when it comes to communicating with the entire council, I'm very cognizant of the Open Meetings Act, and for me to communicate with all the council members and for them to communicate back to me at once could constitute a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I, I try to be cognizant of that based on my attorney's legal advice. So, you know, as always, I, I'm open to any lines of communication that I am directed to, to, to have, if it's in certain groups or anything of, of that nature. My last direction was to work with the council president and, and staff, and, and make sure everything's approved by you. So that's, that's about it, but all these applications are on file with staff, and I'm more happy yet again to, to provide the emails like I did last time, last year, that showed that they were all communicated to staff and everybody else. So that, that's not a problem. If the council member would like a copy of every application every single time, and I'm instructed to do so, I will happily provide him one as well.
Mr. President, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would. I mean, why wouldn't I, why would not any council member want the application, the grant application, to see what we actually voted on and seeing if we, if that's something that we actually want? And that, we're even actually, and the treasurer and the city manager need to have it also to make sure they're following in line with what the grant requires. We got certain requirements, we got, we got, we got, we got certain requirements, and you know, as a former elected official, you know, you can come to, you can come to, you can come to any work session, we can discuss anything, any long-range planning that we have to do, it won't be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. No one's asking you to come meet with the council in secret. We have work sessions that's open to the public, and they need to, they need to be open to the public so that they can see what's going on. So you know that a, a meeting can be held at any time, a public meeting can be drawn up, I mean, can be called for, to meet with you, or you can come to a work session that will not violate the Open Meetings Act. So I'm not sure why that statement was even made. No one said we do anything in secret around here, but obviously, somebody does. But, so I need to ask, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Simpson, so you, you don't have any applicant, no grant applications?
I, I do know that certain applications are sent. I don't have a compiled list. I will work to get that for the council, for you.
Because I have not seen one attached to any resolution.
So we'll get that. I just want to...
I asked for it, I asked for it three weeks ago. And that's another thing, I asked for it three weeks ago, and here we are three weeks later, and it's still, it's all up in air. Nobody got it. I'm done, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, so just with one point, especially to this $4 million grant, I don't know why this computer's taking so long to show. It very well, well, maybe that I need a new computer. Well, I don't know if it's ever going to come up, but again, the council president does not act on his own. I think Mr. O'Connor, he does send us a lot of information. And for grants where I did not have, oh, it just backed out, well, grants where I did not have a, a vote, I've sent that out to council. But just referencing again, I tried to pull it up. But R-30-2024, a resolution to retrofit sidewalks in areas of the City of Glen Arden where they are currently absent to improve pedestrian accessibility and safety, and to promote environmental sustainability, and enhance the health and well-being of residents. This was a, again, a resolution that was brought forth by a council member Fareed and co-sponsored by a council member Herring, and I'll just read it. Where many areas within the City of Glen Arden have been developed without inclusion of sidewalks, creating challenges for pedestrians, movement, and accessibility. Whereas the absence of sidewalks poses safety risks for schoolchildren who walk to and from schools daily, and for all pedestrians forced to share the road with vehicular traffic. Whereas the City of Glen Arden recognizes the importance of promoting sustainable transportation options and reducing the carbon footprint by encouraging walking as a viable and environmentally friendly mode of transportation. Whereas a regular physical activity such as walking is known, is known to improve health and well-being, and the availability of sidewalks is crucial to supporting the health of residents. And whereas the City of Glen Arden is committed to ensuring equitable infrastructure development that meets the needs of all residents, including those with mobility impairments. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session the 16th day of January 2024, that one, the city shall undertake a comprehensive assessment to identify, identify key areas within the city limits where the installation of sidewalks is both feasible and will have the greatest impact on pedestrian safety and mobility. Two, upon completion of the assessment, the city shall prioritize areas near schools, parks, and public transportation stops for the initial phase of sidewalk retrofitting. And three, the city shall pursue funding through local, state, and federal sources, including grants and partnerships, to support the financial costs associated with the sidewalk retrofitting project. So with that, I mean, it goes on, but with that, there was a mandate by this council. It's signed, it was, it passed unanimously, and so there was a mandate for the pursuit of funding at the grant, I'm sorry, at the local, state, and federal level for grant funds, which is why he was given the green light, based on the authority that the all council members have provided with this resolution.
Mr. President, there was supposed to be an assessment done, and I remember that piece of legislation, that's what we, we never got it done. There was no assessment done with the community to see who wanted sidewalks, where we needed sidewalks, or anything else. Because I, I felt the thing about that legislation was, the community was supposed to be involved to find out if they want sidewalks in their area, those who don't have them, and those who do have them, because I know I can't get a sidewalk on Church Street, that's one of the shortest streets in the world. But again, but assessment wasn't done. And that's what, that's what, that's my thing, because that, that involved community input and community, um, community input and community support. But that wasn't done. It was, there was no assessment done on those sidewalks. You know, once talked to people in War III or any other place that need a side, that don't have sidewalks if they want sidewalks? We've never had a public meeting or a public forum or notified them that we were going to do this, or that you're going to dig up the front of their yard and pull 20, 10 feet from off the front of their yard and put a sidewalk down. So again, you know, you can read the, you read the, the resolution right, but you left out that big part about the assessment. No assessment was done. And, and I know no assessment was done, because I know we haven't heard from anybody about sidewalks. And that, that's why I'm saying, things aren't done in order, because you need to hear from the people. They need to say what they want. Then you go for the grant. Because now, if they come back and say, I don't want this, what you going to do now? So...
Thank you. And citizens still have opportunity to come out and make their voices heard. There, there still has to go through the same process where a resolution is brought forward. Citizens have an opportunity to come and speak whether they want the sidewalks or not. I, I do not doubt that people have come to you and said they don't want a sidewalk, but also, people have come to us and said they do want sidewalks. So it's a, a healthy discussion. I just was on, is that Beth? Beth or Tyra, Ty, Tyrell?
Tyrell.
I, I think it's Beth. I like Beth. I was just driving there, and a lady was walking in the street with her two-year-old daughter. Look, she could not have been more than two or three-year-old, because there's no sidewalks on that street. And for our schoolchildren to, to walk in the street and share the roads with, with cars, I think it's unfair. I'd also agree that those residents who live there have a right for their voices to be heard, and they still can come to be heard, because we have not identified the streets that could possibly get sidewalks, so...
Mr. President, can I, let me just ask this one question. So you're saying that if they don't want it, you're going to turn them back in? You want to turn the grant back in? If they don't want sidewalks, you're going to turn the grant back in?
Well, that's looking at it from only one side.
No, 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 I'm asking a question. If the citizens over there say they don't want it, you're going to turn the grant back in?
Well, if the citizens say they do want it, then we'll use the money.
No, 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 I'm not asking. I'm just asking, if they don't want it, are you going to turn the grant back in?
That's, that's not a fair structure of the question, because there's so many areas in the city that can use sidewalks. Even if Beth doesn't want it, we could still create sidewalks on other areas of the city that don't have sidewalks. So we're saying that we're just going to take a small subs, group of people who don't want it on one street and, and not do it for the rest of the city?
This was throughout that area, since I've been on the council, it's been throughout that area. So I'm just, I'm just saying again, so if they, if a majority of the people over there say they don't want it, we're going to turn the grant back in?
No, there, there are plenty of areas where we can use this funding for the sidewalks. There, on this, on the same street that you've heard, no. On, I've heard, yes, on the same street. That's why I'm saying that residents can come and make their voices heard in a public of, in, in the interest of public safety, so I, so people don't have to share the same road as cars when they're walking. I mean, right now, I would be willing to put sidewalks in, but if everybody on the street, if it's unanimous that they don't want sidewalks, well, and that includes a person who was walking their daughter in the street, then what am I going to say? But there are other areas in the city that can use sidewalks. There's so many places in the city that do not have sidewalks.
No, it isn't. There aren't places that don't have sidewalks.
Well, and I'm sorry, in War III.
That's War III, yeah. Everybody's concerned.
Um, one second, I'm going to go to Councilwoman Fareed, then I'll go to Mr. O'Connor. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Part of the assessment is determining who actually owns the land, because in general, the, a city or county or municipality controls the right of way, and homeowners actually do not own all the way up to the curb. And per our city charter, the city council does have authority to, on the lands that it's responsible for, to ensure public safety. So we would, you know, determine and assess what the desire of the community is, but also, if we feel that there is a significant public safety concern, and we need to put sidewalks in the spaces that we actually have the right of way to, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, Council President, thank you. And, and I think it's a, a great conversation, because as, as the grant continues, there's actually, from Councilwoman Fareed brought up, the, there's 10 to 15% of this grant is actually, goes to exactly what Councilmember Herring was talking about. You know, I've watched the meetings, and I've, I've seen the evolution of the sidewalks, and spoke to staff, but 10 to 15% of the grant is for exactly what the council member wants to do, which is have the flyers go door-to-door, have those community forums, you can hire an outside consultant to come in, you can pay for... You can pay for Charles P. Johnson and Associates. You can pay for some of the DPW time, the treasurer's time that goes into it. All of those things are encompassed in that. Plus, the other benefit of this, the sidewalk grant, is it can also retrofit. So if you have sidewalks that are dilapidated or broken, they can be fixed. If you have sidewalks that don't currently meet American with Disability Act standards, they can be retrofitted to ensure that each one has a ramp and/or stippling pointed on them. So there is a plethora of uses for this money that I can almost guarantee you would not have to turn this back in. And quite frankly, when it comes to this type of construction, three point five million does not go far with sidewalks. Concrete's expensive, and retrofitting is expensive, and this has to be planned and coordinated. So there's money to do exactly what the council member wants, and I'm glad he brought it up, because it's very important that the community is involved, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Is there any other discussion before we move forward with the vote? Here and now, we'll go with the voice vote.
Councilwoman Farid?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes. All right, this resolution passes. All right, moving on. To reports. Are there any questions related to the mayor's report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, so Mayor, I just want to ask about the item, City of Glen Arden fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget submitted. So the budget that we have is the budget that you submitted.
The budget that you have would be the budget that I submitted. As long as it is, again, the budget that is emailed from my mayor's account. So did you get a different budget not emailed to you?
I'm not sure what it was. I don't know what email it came from. The clerk, you received it, yeah.
Okay, you received it from me, Council Clerk?
I'm looking.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as I recall, so initially, no one had received it in the city. And then subsequent to that, I think it was, we had that meeting on a Monday, I think, that weekend. She did send it out. I received it. I can't speak to everyone else.
No, I just, I just want to, I just want to confirm that that's her budget. She's saying if it came from her. Because she in a cross, a C cross at City Glen Arden.
That's correct.
Is that where it came from?
Yes. All right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the mayor? Here and now, we'll move on to city manager. Is there a city manager report? I see a treasurer report. Are there any questions for city manager?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
So Mr. Simpson, there's a couple of things. What is the, what is the grass cutting schedule? Because on Election Day, we got so many complaints about that grass. And I'm not understanding why the grass wasn't cut on that day, especially since we having all these people come up here. So I just want to know what the cut, and actually, when I went out there today, when I put up today, back here is not cut, but the front is cut. So what, they just do half and half?
No, sir, and we do try to cut daily, pretty much four to five, four days a week at a minimum, with Friday as cleanup day. I do believe we may have some weather events, and we are a bit short-staffed. But it is noted that the grass cutting schedule, excuse me, that grass cutting, we need to tighten up with it.
Yeah, because I mean, that day, it should have been, that grass should have been cut on Election Day. I mean, people are like, what is going on here? Your grass look so bad, and you got all these people coming up here. And even like right now, back here is hot, but the front is cut. So I'm just trying to figure out who, I mean, whose idea is that they only cut half the town hall? If anything should be cut, the town halls should be looking nice all the time. If nothing else is looking nice, the town halls should be looking nice.
Yes, sir.
Okay, another, another question. I've been asking, I haven't gotten, my fingerprint logs. I've been asking, and it's gone on months now, I haven't gotten one. I've asked to get a monthly, haven't gotten. So when I'm going to get them?
Yes, sir, I'll assure you, get the fingerprint logs on tomorrow.
Okay, and I'm talking about from, well, you know, I did just want a few months, but I'd rather just get them for the year. So starting from July to now. I would like to get the fingerprint logs.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, GPS. I was, you've been saying you want to show us it, you want to do a demo on it, so we can see what's going on with that, how it works, what's going on. Does it maintain an audit log also?
Yes, sir, it definitely does reporting. We'll also schedule an open either virtually or a session to be able to show you exactly how it works.
And I'd like to get a copy of what the audit logs look like too, at least for the last two months.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the city manager? Here and now, the next report, Public Works. Any questions for Public Works? Okay, any questions for Cole? Councilman Herring?
Yeah, Mr. Green. I saw that email about the person that was being attacked by two pit bulls. We really got to do something about the dogs in this community, because that could have ended really, really badly. Person could have really seriously injured, and if it was a child, it could have been killed. We have leash laws in this, in this community, and it seems to me that more and more people are ignoring it. So have we communicated to the citizens again about leash laws and containing their dogs?
Thank you, Councilman Herring, for that question. Yes, we have. We've actually put something out in the newsletter that talks about the leash law and, you know, picking up the dog poop. And as it relates to that particular situation, I want to give thanks to Officer, Code Officer Jones. She worked that particular situation, and I don't think that the animals will be coming back to that particular property.
Okay. Also, what's the fine for, what's it for not having your dog on a leash?
I think it's about twenty-five dollars, but I can double check.
Okay, we need to look at increase in that, because that's no deterrent. People continue to do that. Also, we need legislation on people bringing, bringing their dogs into other people's yard to go to the bathroom. I mean, that's absolutely, you walk out your house, down the street to somebody else's house to have your dog go to the bathroom in their property. So I'm going to be looking at bringing legislation, at least give a five hundred dollar fine on that, because that's ridiculous to sit there and do that when you got a backyard and a front yard and everything else, and you're taking it to somebody else's property. So, yeah, we need to, we need to look at that. I think that's it.
I have a follow-up. So I thought that you could not have a pit bull in the county.
Yeah, so currently, the county has suspended enforcement of that, because they're going through a lawsuit. And so they have frozen the enforcement on pit bulls, so that they can, you know, go through the process and then make a ruling. But right now, they are not enforcing anything with pit bulls.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, the question is, can't we? Actually, we can, right? But what, do you, do you know what the lawsuit is about?
Yeah, so, and I can, I can pull it up. The lawsuit is basically saying that owners of pit bulls had sued the county as it relates to them banning the breed of dog. And so the county took that, they took that legislation, and I think it might even be on the federal level. So please don't quote me on it, but I will find out for certain.
And then the question was, can the city, the city can ban it, right?
I think.
Let me answer that, because of the pit bull I had on my street. Now, if the pit bull becomes aggressive, he's out unleashed and running through the neighborhood, terrorizing the neighborhood, even in other neighborhoods I've talked to, like in Oxon Hill, they had this problem maybe two weeks ago with pit bulls. Even though they have a moratorium on the pit bull, the county will, if someone calls Prince George's Animal Control and asks them to come out, they will look at the dog, just as Captain Robinson did for the pit bull that was on my street. He had animal control come out and look at the dog. If it's an American bully or pit bull, then the county will look at it, determine their gender, their breed, and then decide if it's attacked somebody, if it's not on a leash or whatever, they will take the dog. And the dog cannot, they give them, the dog cannot come back in the community, even during the moratorium that they have on it, because the pit bull owners are saying that the dog is, there's nothing wrong with those dogs, they're so great, they're this, that, and the other. And you just never know by reading different legislations, not necessarily legislation, but different complaints, when the dog is going to turn. So that's what the moratorium is about. But like I said, for the one that was on my street, the one that was on Fisk Avenue, Officer Robinson, Officer Jones came out, they looked at the dog, had the county come and look at it, and the dogs were taken away. And you cannot, once the animal control picks up the pit bull, you cannot bring it back. It cannot come back.
Thank you. Everybody, any other questions for Cole? All right, here and now, Chief of Police report. Are there any questions on the Chief of Police report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
I just want to get some stats from the Chief of Police, from the Police Department, just the crime stats.
Chief, have you come to the table, please?
We used to get them when Chief O'Donnell was here, he always supplied them when he came, when he gave a report. He always gave us the crime stats.
You can pick one, you can either go there or at the podium, whichever feels comfortable for you.
Good evening, everyone. For the city of Glen Arden, for crime report, for the stats, for April, we're up. In Losany, like mostly the city in the DMV area, we have seven compared to three last time this year. And for vehicle theft, three compared to two last time this year. And assault, one compared to zero last time this year. That's what we have for the false stats compared from last year, comparison to this year. False stats for the city of Glen Arden.
Did you put that in your report?
What report?
Your police report.
No, that's not, that's, that.
Can we get that, your report?
It's different dates, so the council, the council requests, this report from the first through the thirtieth. The council requested reports on the twenty-first, so it won't be in that report.
I mean, it doesn't matter, just whatever, the latest crime stats that you have before the meeting will be fine for me. I mean, the treasurer's report is what I'm behind, so.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
And last but not least, any questions on a city treasurer report?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
So are we on point, Mr. Stewart, with our, to being within budget?
Being within the budget.
And I'm looking at going over, in other words, in the year, we're what, a surplus or?
We are still on a surplus as it relates to information through to April. So we are still on point with regard to staying on budget.
And, let's see. So I'm looking at some of the revenue figures, and we're we're behind on. Oh, I'm going to draw. Okay, I'm looking at the summary report for the am I missing a page? Oh, here we go, okay. So we're, we haven't collected all the revenue. We're going to come in under budget on the revenue, but look like it, six hundred and nine thousand dollars, or we on track to meet that budget amount.
As it relates to the
The total revenue for the year.
We are coming close to it. I could tell you that as it relates to real property tax, I think we are on point to get to that budgeted amount and even exceed it. As it relates to personal property tax, just reviewing the numbers here, I see that there may be prior personal property tax included in the current year. So I may have to do some reviews and have reallocations done. As it relates to state income tax, the individual income tax, I think we're on point with that. This report that we're looking at is March, and I believe in the next two months, we will see significant increases in funds collected.
Again, I really need to get these reports earlier than we did, than we do, because again, I didn't have really time, chance to go over these. So then I'll be asking about information that may not be relevant come next month, if, you know.
Well, the report for April was sent out today.
Right. Now you have a chance to look at it. That probably would have answered some of my questions. One thing, I'm looking at, and maybe just this one question about telephone communication, and it just popped out at me. And this is on the summary page, I know you probably have to go across all departments with that, but it's like eleven thousand dollars over budget.
So what's happening with the telephone and communication is that we need to, well, I'm actually starting a review of that account to see exactly what are the devices that we are actually paying for. I fear there may be some that we may have to take out of commission, because I don't think all of those devices are in use. So that's the next review that I have to do. I've actually spoken to the city manager about it, to say that I'm going to be reviewing those accounts to take out some of those devices that may not be required right now. So that's a concern for me as well.
All right. Thank you. Again, Dan, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Are there any other questions for city treasurer? Here and now, we will move on to citizens' comments. So citizens, this is a portion of the meeting where you get to speak on anything you want to. You can raise your virtual hand online, and I'll acknowledge you if you're in the building, which there are not too many people in the building. You can raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge you. You've come to the podium. Just state your name, and you can state your street, and if you don't know your ward. And then you have five minutes. All right, with that being said, I did see one hand, Mr. Cross, and then we'll, I saw your hand, sir. your hand, sir.
Mario Cross, Ward Three. I've just got a couple of questions for the mayor. Got to keep it quick because I have several questions. What impact would the changes to the Washington Metropolitan Area Transportation Authority's Route A-12 have on the residents without personal transportation? And are, and are there alternate solutions being considered? Because I know that goes down Glen Arden Parkway, I believe, and it's being changed or removed, that they're not going to go through Glen Arden anymore. Second question is, how is the city of Glen Arden incorporating the plan Prince George's 2035 goals, such as affordable housing and transit-oriented development within FY 2026 budget planning? Next question is, how would the seniors' property tax credit revision at the county level affect Glen Arden seniors? And what recommendations have you made, Mayor Cross, in supporting this? Next question is, on what role did you play in participation with the neighborhood planning coalition play in shaping of strategic, of Glen Arden's landlocked development challenges? And my last question is, I don't know if any citizens know about this, but Eric's Law? The update on Eric's Law, I know there were some big things going on down in Annapolis this past week. Can you give us any updates on the effects of Eric's Law in our community at large? That's all my questions.
Yeah, if you can keep the answers brief, that'll be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for the questions. Let's see, your first question dealt with the Washington Transit, Metro Transit. Yeah, that issue is a really big one for us, effective as of June the 29th of 2025. This could remove services from Glen Arden. And I know that we even have residents in our room here that actually do utilize the transit system. And that Route P-12 that goes, essentially is going to become new P-60 along Martin Luther King Junior Highway. The altercation, the alteration could significantly impact our residents, and particularly our seniors, those who do not have personal vehicles, who do rely on that public transportation. So, I've already reached out, as well as with the emergency management folks, to try and figure out relative to this route altercation, that's the alteration that's going to happen on the 29th of June, the level of impact that it's going to have, the number of residents that we actually do have on Route P-12, and particularly our seniors, relative to those that do not have vehicles. I also looked into and acknowledged those concerns, actively collaborating, again, with the transit officials, to try and make sure that we establish proper partnerships, particularly if it comes down to the city of Glen Arden, because I wasn't inquired of. I don't, I am a person of interest when it comes down to different changes and developments in and around this county, but that's not something that I received, and I don't think that it came through the city manager, because they usually would send those through the mayor's office. And so, one of the key things is making sure that we continue to build a community-based transportation that identifies not only the specific gaps that this A-12 removal could cause, but also to maintain access to essential services. As you know, the area that's particularly covered in this is a food desert, so if people are trying to get to either medical care or even food sources, if you're using the public transportation and you don't have a vehicle, then you can see that could pose a big problem. So, when, relative to your next question, and dealing with the affordable housing issue, one of the key things that we talked about in this Prince George's 2035 is that we need to make sure that we get a general appreciation of what this plan has. And even bigger than '35, I mean, they've already progressed into 2040, and you'll see many of the development with also the consideration of the removal of the commanders, and then the new data center that's coming to the Landover Mall. See, all those things are relative to kind of like what's going to happen in the future, and relative to Glen Arden, we have become essentially a landlock of housing. And so, they're looking at essentially using us as kind of like the cash cow for bringing in new transients and new residents, and it's not necessarily something, it may help the property value a little bit, but it's really probably not, because we're having, about 20% of our population already looking at shifting out. If you look at the development processes and the various provisions that have been made, this 2035 doesn't really look in the crosshairs of Glen Arden as far as purpose, and it does not particularly underscore our commitment to expanding for our community the housing market and preserving our seniors' ability to retire in place. So, that's one of the concerns when it comes down to that, and it's tied in, again, to this transient-oriented development. Now, the senior property tax credit, that was Prince George's County enacted CB 007 2024, and then they also did, for this particular legislation, provided a clear guideline to financial responsibility when it comes down to our seniors. Now, that will be in effect on June 30th of 2025, relative to the response of what I've done as the mayor and working with the city manager and the treasurer, is to try and hold our constant tax yield and tax rate at the FY 25 numbers. And so, the best that we can do is really hold at this time of uncertainty, at the federal level and at the state level, particularly at the county level, when it comes down to these property taxes, with the appropriate aim of mitigating any potential financial burden, not only on our senior residents, but also our working-class residents. So, I'm committed to continuing to preserve that, and also managing as well with those that are in other areas of the community, to ensure that in our resident, I mean, you may have seen that there have been developments in other cities where they're actually now forming coalitions to try and combat some of the challenges that 2035 is going to pose. So, Glen Arden, when it comes down to neighborhood planning and the cohort that I went through, now, I was given a challenge by Senator Benson on her last visit to this chamber, to actually work with Peter Shapiro. Well, I'm happy to say that I did have an opportunity to be a part of this past cohort that graduated, and Peter was one of our graduating class certifiers. So, as fate would have it, I had the opportunity to speak to him about the development challenges that happened at the Glen Arden Community Center, and the fact that many other community centers have been involved, and Glen Arden Community Center, I think, may have evolved prior to 2015, but that's the last time. It really doesn't have anything for like our Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club, our track team that supports, you know, we've supported them with grants here out of the city, but they don't really have a practice location. And anytime it rains over there, and I've been to several of the kids' games, I mean, our, our young middle schoolers are like the state champ right now, and they're playing in a mud field. And so, I did get a chance to talk to Peter Shapiro about this, and many other members of the Neighborhood Planning Commission, they were all excited about the proposal to do an upgrade, to actually put a stadium as well as a track at the Glen Arden Community Center. So, I'm happy that Senator Benson is willing to work with me on getting this done, because Peter said yes. We just got to get, get busy. So, that's a done deal. And for Eric's ID law, now, that's been a two-year struggle. We started working with that, it's actually been a three-year prior to Eric and Ms. Linda Grantham catching the bug of trying to change the state law relative to hidden disability, and that includes autism awareness. I want to say the first program that they did was here in this municipal center, and we hosted a paint and sip with the Autism Awareness Day, and before even Sheriff Carr became Prince George's County Sheriff, he was here getting painted on by the kids. But this has been a real journey, you know, compassion and love. We went on the Shirley Shepherd Show, the Whoopi Goldberg Show, you know, The View, and not only that, but over a million people across America have stated that they need more of this across America. We have now become, as of the 13th of May, present in signing, the 21st state in the nation to approve and ratify legislation to mandate training for federal and all police officers that are affiliated with the state of Maryland, that they will know how to address someone with a hidden disability, be it autism, PTSD, bipolarism. They now will have an indicia on their license that will afford that officer, when they pull the license, to act in accordance to the law and preserve safety. So, no more George Floris, no more Rodney Kings. So, this is an opportunity for the state of Maryland to say, we care about those of our community that really have not had an advocate. So, it's been a pleasure to be an advocate on those areas, and thank you so much for the question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Wait, hold on one, she says something first, and I'll come to you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make one correction. The Glen Arden Track Team practices, and have been practicing for the last, since the Sports and Learning Complex has opened, that they have been practicing on the outside field and on the inside field. So, it's not that they practice at that, at the Maryland National Park and Planning Facility here in Glen Arden, they're over at the Sports and Learning Complex, and have been there since it opened. Thank you.
And you're correct in that. The point is that we should put a field for them to practice here as well.
So, one second, so, Mayor, if you'd just, so I can acknowledge you, because Councilman Harry wants to say something first, and if you raise your hand, then I can acknowledge you instead of just blurting out. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I just wanted to declaratification. You said P-12, are you talking about the A-12?
This is, I was given P-12 on this change, y'all. A-12, is A-12?
It's the A-12, yeah. Because the A-12 didn't, they just recently, a couple of years back, had it going through Glen Arden, and then they, because it used to run on 704, and now they had it going through Glen Arden, so I guess they're going to put it back on 704, because the ridership isn't, isn't what it should be, so, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, sir, if you could state your name.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Powell, I live in Ward One, and I have several questions for the mayor. Now, Madam Mayor?
Is your mic on?
I don't think it's on.
No, it's on, and, 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 Mr. Powell, if you could ask all your questions, I'm sure she could capture them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have to repeat, my name is Anthony Powell, I live in Ward One, and I have several questions for the mayor.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, the A-12 bus would no longer go through Glen Arden. It would no longer go down Johnson Avenue and Glen Arden Parkway and Bryce Road. It goes strictly down Martin Luther King Highway. So, those people who live on Bryce Road, and they wanted to catch the A-12, they would have to walk from Bryce Road to Martin Luther King Highway just to catch the bus. So, so if you want to catch the A-12, you had to go to stand on MLK Highway to catch the bus. What about the F-14? It goes to, it goes to Glen Arden and Nell Road Station. Would they still, would they change that also?
Yeah. I mean, if you want to answer it, that's fine.
Do you have other questions?
No, that's about, that's about it.
I haven't heard anything about the F-14, sir, but I will follow up and respond and email to you directly. I have your email, and also include the council in that, if there are any changes. But, and accordance to that particular, the A-12 note, yes, that, that's the way it would seem, sir. So, you can see where it is a problem, where we do have a large sum of our residents who do depend on the public transportation system. And that busing system changing, again, it's not something that came in through, I, as the mayor, I didn't get anything, and I don't know if the legislators got anything, but as a relatively, relative to changes that the county is making, that impacts, you know, the livelihood and the consistency of livelihood for our residents, this is where we got to evolve, Mr. Powell, because at the end of the day, you know, from residents being built, we didn't know what was going to be built, data centers being built, we didn't know what was going to be built, we can't keep running to the table late. And something like this, where transportation is a necessity of life in some cases, this is something we need to be informed. But I'll follow up on the F-14 and respond.
So, the MLK, the A-12 will go to Sutland instead of Addison Road?
Right.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to follow up on some more on this. I just got this, like, really just briefly, and was like, whoa, that don't make sense. So, if we got these two, I'm going to make sure, my goal is to make sure that we do not lose residential support when it comes down to public transportation. And I know that there's been a lot of changes in the Blue Line Corridor, there's been a lot of changes to make way for the training systems, okay, but that impacts Glen Arden tremendously, particularly in Wards One and Ward Two. And so, I will follow up and return.
Because I heard people complain that if they're living near the bus stop, and you're closing that bus stop down, now they have to walk over here to catch the bus, and then a lot of people, a lot of elderly people, they just, they're going to have a difficult time doing that. So, I'm kind of, kind of confused right now.
You're correct. And I will follow up on the F-14, and in the next report that will be shortly coming out for this month, we'll make sure that there is an update in there that includes that line as well.
What about the bus, the, the county bus, would that still go through Glen Arden?
As far as I know, but I'll follow up on all busing system and make sure that you get a full busing system traffic report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Ms. Gaither.
Uh, yeah, good evening. My name is Lili T. Gaeth, I'm in Ward One. So, my comment tonight is about the first piece of legislation about the regulating the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas. So, I guess, it, obviously, it didn't pass tonight, so I would just like to ask the two council members who voted no tonight, why they voted no, and how do they see a resolution to the commercial vehicle issue? Last week in the public hearing, the council kept mentioning that the parking of commercial vehicles goes against PG County Code or law. So, are we just planning on ignoring it? And if you do have resolutions, I was just wondering, is it ever brought up in the work session, so that you could come up with some type of solution to the problem, so then when it comes up for a vote, it would pass? That's my comments or questions.
Thank you. Councilman Fareed?
Thank you, and thank you for your question. I'm sorry I did not catch your name, but I am the council member who sponsored the resolution to prohibit commercial vehicles in the city and permit work vehicles in the city. So, when we talk about work vehicles, we're not talking about, you know, tractor trailers or those types of things, those types of vehicles are prohibited. When we're talking about work vehicles, we're talking about a regular pickup truck, but it has lettering on the side of it, because, you know, someone has a landscaping business, versus someone who has a pickup truck, because they just, you know, enjoy driving pickup trucks. One of the primary concerns that was raised by residents when they came forward prior to the drafting of that resolution, or that ordinance, rather, was that these vehicles were obstructing the street. And it is true. I live in Ward Three, and every morning on my way to work, I have a difficult time seeing around Beth Avenue, because there are several pickup trucks parked on both sides of the street. If the issue is about obstruction of the streets, it doesn't matter if there are words on the side of the vehicle or not. The size of the vehicle is the issue, and that is why, in the ordinance that has already passed, we have that stipulation where work vehicles and personal vehicles of the same size need to be parked in driveways. Because, again, if a pickup truck is obstructing passage for emergency vehicles or for visibility, it's not because of the lettering on the side of the truck, it's because of the size of the vehicle. And that is why that clause was in the ordinance that was passed already. So, this particular ordinance that was being brought forward stated that that particular clause was in the ordinance that already passed erroneously, and that is not correct. There was a deliberate reason for it being in there. It was discussed at a work session, so there was no error in putting that clause in there. The purpose of those vehicles being parked in people's driveways, regardless of whether they're being used for work or personal purposes, is because the size of those vehicles are an obstruction, particularly on our streets, that are really not two, two-lane streets. They're one-lane streets that have two-way traffic coming through them, and having these vehicles parked on either side of the street as well is a safety hazard for people, they can prevent... They can prevent emergency vehicles from coming through. So that is why I voted no on this particular ordinance, because it wanted to strip the ordinance that's already been passed prohibiting commercial vehicles. It wanted to strip that particular clause out. So that's why I voted no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed. Are there any other citizens' comments? Ms. Cynthia Gray?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Gray. I live in Ward 3. I want to thank the council for addressing and moving forward with the speed bumps throughout the city. I do want to say that I would love to see the council work with PG County Council to address the traffic safety with regard to speeding on Campus Way North. It continues to be a major issue, and while I understand that it's not coded to have speed bumps, there are other measures that I think could be implemented that will help slow the traffic down, especially like at the crosswalks. Additionally, I've heard that a data center is going to be coming to our area where the old Landover Mall was, and in doing like brief research on it, I could see that it has a lot of negative impact in the area with regard to the local water supply, the noise pollution, and the consumption that constrain the local, the local electricity grid. But my hope is that the city council will do its best to have a seat at the table where these decisions are being made that are going to really impact our city. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Are there any other comments? Ms. Gaither has a smoke. Okay, well...
Excuse me, Council President. It was two people that voted no, so I was just wondering, does Councilwoman Jones, she feels the same way, or that's her same reason?
Thank you, Ms. Gaither, for answering that question. I do feel the same way as Councilwoman Fareed, and also, the legislation for commercial vehicles had been put in somewhat like a moratorium because we were going to sit down and re-discuss what was going on. And then I also took into consideration your neighbors, Ms. Richmond and Ms. Henderson, concerning the pickup trucks in the driveway and the street where they cannot see when they're coming out of Fisk Avenue. Thank you.
Ms. Alita Hunter?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm going, I'm in a meeting. I apologize for that. Good evening. I wanted to comment, I have a question about the Glock tag readers. Like I said, I kind of did, I did my research when I was at the last meeting, and I've also read up on it further. And having experienced what I did with an aggressive driver and having a gun reached for, all because this person was driving crazy and just was having a horribly bad day, if those were in place at that time, they could have very well had picked up that tag, picked up that card, picked up that tag number off of that car quicker. My thing is, Glen Arden, we're, it's not, to me, it's not so much as, I don't look at it as though we're trying to catch residents and see what they're doing. I see it as though people come through 704. 704 is a thoroughfare. I mean, you got people going to Landham Buoy, Sea Pleasant, DC, wherever the case may be. Now, my concern would be if we did not have this in place, and it's known knowledge that we don't have it in place, but you can travel almost anywhere else, and they have this technology, they've had it for years. Like I said, we've, we are always being watched, you know? But the thing that I read was that it's not picking up any facial recognition. It's not getting your face, it's not capturing you in a car, it's getting your tag number. Me, as a citizen who, I don't go out of my way to do anything wrong, I'm driving through, if you pick up my tag number and I'm going through somewhere, and you need to run my tag number, run it, you know? I'm not a criminal, I'm not doing anything. But I think it's more so to keep the city of Glen Arden safe, and if anyone tried to come through Glen Arden and think, oh, that's the area where, you know, hey, we can run into 7-Eleven real quick, and we can do, go in there, rob that store, get back in our car, nobody will pick up our tags, so they don't have any camera systems going on, so they won't know. So we know this is a dead area where we can do whatever we want to do, and we definitely do not want to set that tone. Time has increased in Glen Arden over the years. There may be one or two, but you don't want to wait till it gets to 10:30 increase. So I would just like to ask the question, I don't know if the locations have been determined or some of the locations have been determined, but I would like to know, I mean, is this mainly going to be 704? It was news to me that it was going to be over near the recreation center, but even if they had them over there, you know, and it's catching, catching tag numbers, how many murders have we had over there? How many innocent people have been killed over there, you know, from gun activity or whatever the case may be, short of somebody was in a car that pulled over? So if, if those cameras are going to allow the police department to catch, get those tag numbers, and the quicker you get that information, the quicker you can solve a crime. Time is of the essence when we're talking about crime and people, you know, committing crimes and running through our city. So I guess my question is, where are the proposed places that these cameras, cameras will be? Thank you all for putting, voting to put the speed bumps in place. And again, I just want to say that, you know, we just elected a new council in, and I was a little disheartened tonight with the back and forth. I, I know people are not going to agree all the time, and I get that, and I'm not sitting up there on the council, so I don't pretend to be in anyone's shoes, but I just hope and pray that in the next four years that we can get stuff done. And, you know, when it's time for these public meetings or whatever the case may be, that the council works out whatever they need to work out before the citizens are coming to hear what's being voted in and to speak. You know, we talk about the citizens of Glen Arden and what we want. What we want is, we want to see unity, we want to see progression, we want to see, move forward, we want to move forward. We don't want to keep staying stuck. And, I mean, we want to keep, we want to be safe. So whenever something comes to the table that's all about safety, majority of the residents will want to be, they're going to be for it. I know I am, and I'm only one, but I could talk to others that would say the same thing. But I, I just, my prayer is that we just all, we can, y'all can work together, and, and, you know, you got people to join these meetings, and they want to stay, but then they hear the bickering, they hear the back and forth, and they, they drop off the meetings. And that's not how we're going to get more citizens coming out to these meetings and being vocal and getting informed with information, because I learned something tonight that I didn't know. But I appreciate each one of you up there, and I'm not in your shoes, but I just wish that we could just have more unity when we have these meetings, and it just moves the city forward. I mean, it's more than a slogan, it's more than a saying. If we're behind, and Sea Pleasant is up to date, and Palmer Park is up to date, and Withfield is up to date, but we're not, that doesn't look good. It doesn't look good, and it's not good for the cities, not good for the citizens. Change is, change happens, and we have to get on board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. For, for two points, the camera locations have not been decided yet, so as Councilmember Harry mentioned, that the chief, the city manager, and the council is going to sit down to determine the locations there for, so that's one. Two, thank you for bringing up the election. I just want to point out and say a big thank you to the Board of Elections and Cynthia Gray for leading the Board of Elections on such short notice. Thank you for sacrificing your time to put on something that at first was a thought could be done, and you guys did it. So thank you for just volunteering and being selfless and putting on the election so that we could have our new council going into the new year. So I appreciate all of your hard work. I know Ms. Cynthia is online, I don't know if anybody else from the Board is online, but a huge thank you, and we truly appreciate your service. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Erica Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication to the city of Glen Arden. I too, like Ms. Hunter, who just went before me, was very disheartened. It's very hard to work a full day, and I'm just speaking for myself, work a full day, have a little, and be able to make the meetings, and you hear just the dissension. Of course, you're not going to agree, but there is a way to disagree. And the thing that rubs me the wrong way is just sitting, listening, right? Listening to people being questioned about their profession. Questions aren't bad, but it's how we do it. It's the tone, it's the body language. All of that is very disheartening because you're representing us, and we're not behaving like that, you are. And so I just want people, it's okay to be passionate, you know, to go off of what Councilwoman Herring said, you know, he made the point about we're safe, yes, and I want us to stay safe, and we can always be safer, right? So it's, I just, take a step back and take emotion out of it, and just know that, that the people who elected you were watching and were listening. Our kids are in the room, they're, they too are listening. And it was really disheartening, which is why I don't come to the meetings, because I don't want to hear this. I want to hear about the business, I want to hear solutions, and I want to hear that you can agree to disagree, and we move forward. Thank you for the speed bump legislation. That's really near and dear to my heart. I was out again today, I had to have my little go in the house because of just the reckless driving. And also, just about the cameras, definitely understand the concerns, definitely understand how things are being used against Black and Brown people, that we just have to be mindful and careful. I definitely understand that. But I too understand that just, you know, those of us who do well, try to be well, try to be good, there are other people who are not on that same mentality. We were in another state in a rental car, and unbeknownst to us, when the police pulls us over, reading the tags, that car wasn't registered to the tags. Now, we rented the car, we had proof, but, you know, it read it, it read it, and of course, the rental car, you know, they, they were on some shady stuff, but that was a good warning for us. The police was like, hey, you got all your documentation, you got all your ducks in a row, but if you go through another street and we got a reader, you're going to get pulled over again, right? It made me feel safe. I'm in a rental car, I don't know what, whoever rented that car before we did what they did with it or anything, but, but it caught it, you know? And so I, I am glad that that is coming our way. Amber Alerts, all of those things, for those of us who have littles, any measure that can help save a child, I'm all for it. Even if that's you recognizing my face, I'm all for it. Anything that can help an elderly person, I'm all for it. And I just want you all to just keep that in mind, you know? Some of you don't have children or far removed from parenting littles, but those of us who do, all of those things are measures put in place to protect our babies, right? The speed bumps, the cameras, all of that, it is beneficial. And so I just, yes, ask your questions, get clarity, be respectful in the way that you ask your questions and get clarity, because whether somebody gets paid $100,000 or $40,000, it's a way you talk to them. Has nothing to do with how much you make, it's, it's respect. And some, some of us need a lesson more than others. So that's all I have. Thank you all for all that you do for the citizens of Glen Arden, and you all have a good night.
Thank you. All right, are there any other citizens' comments before we adjourn? Hearing none.
I got to do that, I do have something I want to say.
Okay. Hearing none. Councilman Harry?
May 31st, we'll be having another shred day, so 10 to 1. So shred donation day, so come on out, shred your stuff, and if you have donations you want to bring in, you can bring your donations in. So 10 to 1, May 31st.
Can I ask a question about that?
Briefly.
Will it be shredded onsite or will it be taken somewhere to be shredded?
On site. We don't do off-site, offsite, we always shred on site, so, yep.
Thank you.
All right. And I just want to remind citizens that if you're not a part of the listserv for the city of Glen Arden to be updated when our meetings are, please register an email. Who the email?
No name.
M. Ward. M. Ward. At CityOfGlenArden.org. And we also put meetings on our marquee and our website, but, you know, I was speaking with a citizen today, trying to, you know, be progressive. If we could somehow book our meetings in advance, so we know the day they're, they're going to be, and somehow find a way where citizens can tap in and our citizens' schedules can be synced up so that everyone knows. Of course, there'll be a choice if they sign up, but we'll look at other ways to make sure that people, that citizens are made aware, because I know I have the same issue with the county, you know, just when county meetings are and things like that, and, and just, it could be a little bit better in how we inform our citizens of when things are. But we do try. We have it on our marquee on our website and a newsletter, so we'll try to, to be a little bit more innovative to keep people engaged. So with that, the time is 10:05. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.